That sits there kind of dormant. And the area we're looking at, and I did give all of you a sketch of the nature trail. And there's two pages here. The first pages are highlighted and it's bringing in the two entryways coming into the trail. And then it's, the number one is where the dog park would actually be. I'm sorry I didn't bring my laser pointer with me. I just want to show everybody where it's at here in the nature park. It's this triangular area right here. Okay? So there's nothing in that area now. The city already mows all the grass in that area. There are some trees in one corner. Those would not be included. We would kind of cut those off and you'll notice that on our map. The trees that are in the one corner would not be included in the dog park. Just because of how that corner comes around. We'll just make it easier to put the fence line in there. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know why this keeps doing this. Oh, let's see. Uh-oh. Hmm. I apologize. I don't know why we're having a problem with this.
Yeah.
I think I just lost my whole thing.
Because Tina did this presentation for the Northern Bay Fund and it went flawlessly. Of course, you know, as soon as we have an audience.
Yeah, I'm really sorry. Like, I have no idea what happened to my entire file. I mean, like, it's not even, I'm gonna boot it back up, but I don't know what happened. I mean, it's just all of a sudden, it's gone.
Aren't you supposed to pick it up and drop it?
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm just like, what? It just kind of, it just literally died. I don't know.
What is?
It's like I don't have, I have power, my battery's there. Well, you all might be getting the PDF file.
Right.
I'm sorry. And I don't have my other laptop with me, so I'm not sure what happened. It's almost like my entire computer just crashed.
Crashed, yeah.
Yeah.
It did, yeah. It's not even booting up for you.
It's not even booting up. No. No, it shows that it's on. All right, well, why, I've got this, trying to figure this out. We'll just talk a little bit about the park. So a dog park essentially has a fence, it's all fenced in, okay? And if you'll notice on your map on the second page, there are two fenced in areas. There's an area that is large enough for large dogs. So large dogs are dogs that are over forty pounds. And then there's another area that's a little bit smaller, and that is for, you know, the smaller dogs. Going into the area, it is all, there are a double gate system. So you bring your dog in, you're gated in, and then there's a second gate you go through. That way, when people are entering and exiting, dogs really can't escape that area. Okay? And then you go right into the park. Now, there will be a second gate. And the second gate is going to be in a large, there'll be actually two of them. There'll be one coming into the large dog park area. And then another one that goes between the large park and the small dogs. That way, vehicles can get in and out of there for cutting the grass, or if there's an event that's going on. It can all happen that, in that way. Okay? And, yeah, I think my computer literally.
Oh, yeah.
Not good. All right, so I'll just have to just explain it to you. And I don't think I can drop my USB on here. I can't. The reason why we were kind of looking at this, the Northern Bay Community Foundation. We have a fund already for the nature trail. So we have been, over the last few years, maintaining the asphalt through there, making sure it's sealed every year. You know, the cracks are redone. But we still are setting on money in that account. So we were thinking, what else could we do to this area? It's utilized, but there's nowhere, there's nowhere to park back there. You can't park on Water Street. You can go back over by the water plant, but there's nowhere to park over there either. So one of the things we would have to do in order to create this dog park is, first of all, we have to fence the whole area in. Secondly, we would have to create a parking lot. So the parking lot, there is some land there, and I would show you a great picture of that land.
She did her homework.
Yeah. Right before you go into the water park. And it's right on the north side of the, okay? We would have to create a parking lot there that would accommodate at least twelve vehicles in that area. All right? And we would also have to put in a handicap bathroom. That would be like a porta potty. At the Bay County, they have a dog park already at the fairgrounds, and they have one there. And it's just a portage on, really, that's for handicap accessible. And it would be removed in the fall and then stored, or we would rent it. It would be one or the other. We'd either have to rent that, or we'd have to buy one, and then the city would have to have it cleaned out. We would have to figure out the aspects of that. But we would have to have something back there, because when people are back there, they're gonna need to have a restroom. And there's nothing back there now at all. So that would be something that we would move out in the fall and then bring back in the spring. It would not be there all winter long. Okay? This area is a beautiful area. And the reason why we thought this would be a great place for a dog park is there's no homes back there. Okay, there's a large, large area. There's no residents that live back by the big area that we're talking about. Okay? The nearest homes are across the railroad, the field, and then the railroad track. The other homes are going to be further down the trail, over by the water plant, on the other side of the water plant, to the south. And then you have to cross the creek, the river, I guess we'll call it the river. On the other side of the river, there are homes over there, but they're set further up on Water Street.
And they're protected by wood.
And they're protected by, yeah, by all of the woods. So it's ideally a good spot, you know, because of course, there's going to be barking out there. Not all the time, you know, not everyone will use the dog park. One of the nice things about a dog park is I travel with our dog, and we've gone to numerous of them on our way over to the other side of the state. We have a place on Lake Michigan. And it's nice when you're traveling, because you can, you know, stop at a location. We've gone to towns, we've gone on Google Maps and looked to see who has the nearest dog park. Stop and let our dogs just run. I've noticed that in Luddington, they have a really nice dog park. And when I was there last summer, a lot of people were from the, out of the area. They came over into the area just so they can let their dogs run in that area. Okay? So one of the biggest questions is, oh, are we gonna pay for this dog park? So that's where our group comes in. So what we would like to do is not only propose the idea, but also raise the funds for it. We would work with the city to establish some grants, do a few fundraisers, and initially, it's gonna take us a good, if we do this, a good eighteen months to really get going on it. We have a couple of phases. Our phase one would be to go ahead and fence in the entire area. We would put a few benches in there. And of course, the gates have to go in at the same time that the fencing will be done. Our second phase would be to put in some equipment. There are some little items that you can put in. Tunnels, like these tunnels that sit on top of the ground for the dogs. They're made of concrete. They're really sewer lines.
Right.
A piece of sewer line that sits into the ground. And.
Even some of just the wooden logs or the jump over.
Yeah, just a few things.
You know, nothing high maintenance.
No, and the benches would be in there. And then we probably would plant a few, a few other trees in there. So there would be shade eventually at some point. Right now, there is a tree, and on our Google Maps that I was going to show you. The tree wasn't there at the time, but there is one tree planted in the center, and it was the one that was over here at the bank, or the library.
Right. Where PNC was.
Yeah, that's the only tree, and it's kind of in the center. So, so eventually, that would be into our, our phase number two. Let me think. I have so much to show you, and now I don't have anything to show you.
Tina did a lot of background work on visiting other dog parks, looking at the signage that we would need. We talked about ordinances and the rules.
All the rules and regulations are there. I have that all wrote down, what the rules and regulations would be. The liability, when you are a pet owner in the state of Michigan, you as an owner are liable. All dogs would have to have their licenses in the county and their rabies vaccine. And those would have to be shown, they'd have to wear those on their collar to be in the dog park. Okay? So.
And we would specify that they had to be, what, like, over six months?
Oh, yeah.
They have to have been able to receive their first rabies shot.
Your dogs, puppies would not be allowed in until they were at least four months old, because they have to have puppy shots, so they couldn't be in. I have all of that. I will send that as soon as I get home on my other computer. I'll send it over to Dawn, so you can go through all of that. It's all listed there. And, and a lot of the rules are the same rules that are posted in Bay City at the dog park there at the fairgrounds. Because we're in the same county, all of those rules still apply. And we would put ordinance, ordinance regulations in where those rules are at for our own area as well. Now, we talk about, let's say, who's gonna clean up after the dog. That's another rule. You'd have to be cleaning up after your own dog. We would have what are called pickup stations in there that have bags in them. And then there's, and there's already trash containers already out there. But we would also put some inside of the fenced area. And animal owners would be responsible to clean up after theirselves. Does that mean everyone does it? No, we all know that's not true. That's not necessarily, but.
And we discussed the possibility of having water, and we chose not to go that route. Because, you know, again, it's another cost and maintenance issue, and we just felt.
There are a lot of dog parks that.
The breeding ground and.
Yeah, there's a lot of dog parks that do not have running water. A lot of pet owners will just bring their own water for them. As myself, as a pet owner, I'm not going to let my dog drink out of another container anyway, that's already there, just because of disease. You know, if you've got an animal that hasn't been vaccinated or something, dog flu, anything like that. So most, most pet owners are bringing their own water to these areas.
Right, like when I took my own personal dogs to training class before we went, we went to the vet to make sure everything was up to date. And I also got them what's called a kennel cough vaccination, so that when they're around other dogs, they're not picking up something from the other dogs, which would be a case with the water.
Yeah, yeah. I know I'm missing things, and I apologize.
Not your fault. Like I said, when we did this practice, it went flawless. It was a beautiful, I mean, just beautiful, but.
Yeah, this computer literally did, is gone. Yes, yes, Gerald.
Where, where was you planning on the parking lot area?
On parking lot, we were looking at the property that the city owns right to the west of the fence of the water plant.
The wastewater.
So when you pull up the wastewater plant.
On Second Street, right there.
Yeah, before you pull into the gate of the water plant, there's a spot on the left-hand side in that whole area. And so we would develop that into a parking lot.
I thought that was Saint Mike's.
Nope, that is ours. Saint Mike's does have their pole barn and that, but that's in between two city sections. We own to the east and west of that barn.
I will send, when I send the PDF file, there are about forty different slides, and there will, there will be pictures in there of that area. Okay? Yes.
Does the lawn, is that gonna need any type of treatment?
Well, the lawn, it's, we're not sure exactly what's gonna all happen with that grass, okay? If the grass starts to get, I mean, this park is getting used a lot, okay? Now, the one in Bay City is used quite often, and there is still good grass there, because I was just there recently. But I've been to other parks where they've mulched the entire area. They've put mulch down on the whole area, because over time, when a dog is urinating, it can destroy that grass within that park. But the ones that I've seen so far, I've only been to one where it was completely mulched, and that is the one in Luddington. And the one in Bay City, there was still grass all there. So, honestly, it will just take time to know if that's what we'll have to do. And if that's what we have to do, then that will be another thing that we'll have to raise money for, you know, over time.
And this will not affect the city's insurance if there's an incident?
No, because as an owner in the state of Michigan, you're liable for your dog, yes. And if you want, Dawn can look into that and give you some information on it if you'd like. I was gonna ask, tell you something else, but I forgot what it was. I think I forgot what I was gonna tell you.
I can't think of any.
Me neither, no.
Like I said, we had a lot of the rules and regulations, a lot of examples of other dog parks that Tina went and visited. It was, like I said, a beautiful presentation. Just sorry it didn't.
Yeah, if anyone has a laptop, I mean, I could plug it in, but I've got it all on USB drive.
So I would be taking care of the fence.
What, what we would do is we would raise money for the fence, all, everything that would be in the dog park. And then we would do a continuation of fundraising in the years to come to help pay for those bags that need to be put there every year.
Right.
You know, all of that. So what the city would be responsible for is maintaining the lawn, which is what they do now. And we would look for maybe some in-kind donations as we, like, start working on the parking lot. You know, we might need them to come over with the bulldozer and move some earth or whatever. We wouldn't ask for any administrative resources, really, because we have a team of people that would be able to do most of this. The grant writing, the fundraising, you know.
What about trash removal?
The city already has trash pickup out there. There are already barrels out there.
Oh, that's right, there's barrels out there.
Well, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. I'll send it off tonight, okay? So then you can all have it this evening. I'll send it to Dawn.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to the approval of the.
Okay, well, I'm gonna send it to, what do you need to listen to?
Shut, shut the thing on the front of it.
Treasure.
There should be a.
Just not in your eyes. Bring her around. Well, we can wait to public comment, please. Um, approval, the consent agenda.
Yeah. I mentioned you have consent agenda, please.
No support.
We have a motion in support for the approval, the consent agenda, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on to committee reports. Can I ask a question here? May, for, on the committees? No, not yet. There's nothing been said yet. That's, I want to address it before something is said. Let's just, no, we're moving on to the city managers' report right now. I'll get to you in a moment.
Okay, as most of you have, all, every meeting, I have my report in there, if you have any questions. In addition, I just want to go over from Cheese Town and do a lot of thank yous, because there was so much effort put forth by many different people. You know, I would like to thank our DPW staff for the hard work that they did in getting ready for the event. All those that took time to be in the parade and create floats to go in the parade. To our sheriff and state law enforcement that also came to help with the parade that day. Craig, for all his dedication and work on putting on the festival and all the other parties involved. The Knights of Columbus for the dinner that night. Also for feeding all of the staff that worked that day. A thank you to This and That Dollar Store. Back about a couple days before the event, Lori from PJ shared with us that she wasn't getting entries in for the parade that day. So we, on our own time, we came up with the float idea. This and That Dollar Store really helped by donating some items to put on the float. George came in on his day off and drove that float for us. Just a real big thank you for that. Road Commission for letting us come down, borrowing barricades. I mean, this was honestly a community effort. I mean, everyone chipped in where they needed to and helped out. And I apologize if I've left anyone out. It wasn't intentional. I just want to say, what an awesome job. It was just, I felt anyway phenomenal. The fireworks, everything, so. And again, I apologize if I forgot anyone.
Did anybody have any questions? Goodbye. Excuse me. Yes, sir.
My question was gonna be, who changed the floor mat on our agenda? We have chair people that should be listed here for that, city services. They should have the opportunity to speak first if they have to address anything or ask questions. And then it should be your turn to speak.
Yep.
Who changed that?
Well, unfortunately, everybody that's on it always goes, asks for Officer Spencer to go ahead and do it. So that's where we just did it that way. But anybody that's on the committee is more than welcome to say anything.
My question was, who changed the floor mat?
I guess it would be myself.
Did you have council approval to change it?
No, I did not.
And why didn't you?
Well, I did change it.
Ask council.
What I did was, I did what continually we're constantly doing to, to have a flow through the meeting. I have no problem if anybody wants to talk. If you have an issue, you're more than welcome to talk.
I understand, but we have a chair person that's made should be in that place. It shouldn't have got changed without mutual.
And we can always go back to, to Councilwoman Spencer for that. Thank you. Councilwoman, would you like to speak on that?
No, I would not. I just felt like when I got to my place, I was feeling, I was saying, Dawn, is there anything else you need to add to this? Sorry, Mr. Spencer, is there anything else you need to add to that? And that was it. It was like just repeating myself month after month. So it's easier just to do it this way, and let them speak on the other themselves.
And we should be having some committee meetings in these different areas too.
Yes, you could always have a committee meeting. I'm never against any of those. I always support those. Well, that's up to the chairperson, okay? That's not up to me, that's up to the chairperson.
That's fine, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for, or city manager?
Oh, yeah, I do have another one, because we're on city services. What happened to our part-time worker?
That gentleman was a no-call, no-show, and actually, I'm sorry, as the clerk will remind me, that is a personnel issue, but.
He was seasonal, he was not part-time.
Jerry.
Pardon?
He was seasonal, he was not part-time.
Okay, so he's gone?
Mm-hmm.
But didn't we approve, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but didn't we approve to hire a seasonal worker? Shouldn't we also approve the dismissal of that seasonal worker?
No, the hire and fire of staff is up to myself, and that seasonal position was not funded by the city. It was funded by the DDA, and I let Brian know of the situation.
Yep, so are we looking to replace somebody? We certainly need help.
The DDA funded that through the end of June this fiscal year. I let Brian know it's up to the DDA. If they choose to fund that again, the city itself does not have the funds available for that in our budget.
But your budget was already set.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to finance and personnel.
Uh, yeah, we had a meeting last Thursday. Thursday, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, anyway, we had several, several topics for a meeting. A presentation from DeChano, DeChano Builders. They are the current owners of the senior housing project on North Street. We're gonna do some renovations there. And they're asking the city to approve a pilot program to assist in obtaining financing for, for their update project at the, at the senior housing project there on North Street. Through their explanation, I'm looking to invest about one point five million dollars into the project, or to the housing project renovation of things, personal property and real property items. And understanding this pilot program is necessary for them to get approval of funding through their funding source. A few questions come up, but we did move forward to, to ask the DeChano rep to present a draft of a pilot program for us. And then have another meeting, a meeting to council to, to look at it. Pilot program, they blew a taxes, so they're not paying taxes based on the real property value. They're paying up based on their rental income. And the presentation she provided was basically equal to the payments we're receiving currently through the traditional way, based on the taxable value of the property. So what they had proposed is eleven percent fee over, for fifteen years. So basically, straight lines, the taxes collected off that, that project over there on North Street, to eleven percent of the rental income. Which, the way it was projected, would equal over getting now. So basically, it's flatlining any, any cost of living increases that we may get. You know, generally, our sister increases of whatever the cost of living is allowed by the state of Michigan, which has been around two to three percent inflator. So, once again, they're asking the city to baseline that tax over the fifteen-year period. You know, our, our community, thinking it was a good idea, we have to tell all the questions, but there's another way to address this too. Another question that I throw is, if you use some type of tax payment to, as I've been speaking to some other people in other communities, and they said that's, might be a better, better method than doing a pilot. But I, I wasn't sure, we aren't sure if that would qualify for the, the financing. Nothing. Oh, do you have anything to comment on? No?
Um, no, just the representative called today and was asking where we were with that. I shared with her that we were gonna, you know, talk about it under F and P tonight, also that we needed to wait for, to see what she comes back with from the other taxing entities. Because they wanted that pilot across the board, and we could not speak for the other taxing entities. So she needs to bring them on board so that we can come to a consensus.
Which, which is the county, the library, Delta College, all those other taxing entities that, that we collect the taxes for. She thought that was all alone? So that's, that's moving forward, and I understand what she was supposed to be, so, so draft agreement.
Yes, I forwarded those on. Did you see those, or?
I haven't seen today.
Okay. I forwarded them actually last week, but with the Cheese Town. And I will, I will send them out again.
Two other things at the meeting. Through the USDA, our sewer fund balance or reserve is required, is required to be at a level and is underfunded. Through the years, it never got funded properly. And USDA is requiring us to fund that reserve to, to a level which satisfies them. So it looks like we're, we're gonna have to take some money out of our reserves and get the fund up to a level that the USDA requires. And I think that figure is around twenty-six thousand. And we'll have to pull all of our unencumbered reserves at this point to get the funding level to the proper point, which is required by USDA for the sewer bonds that are out there. And we also talked about, there's an issue with shut-offs on water and sewer. And residents that buy a vacant adjoining lot ask for removal of our regular service charge, our, our basic rate for tapping service at those lots. So we did discuss that. Haven't come to a resolution on that. Some ideas were thrown out, ways to help the residents that do that. They have a lot they bought, there's no billing on it, but they're still paying for the regular service charge on it, for joint lot. Dawn had recommended some ideas, which I think we thought were reasonable and with the group, so. I don't know where we're gonna go with that, we'll have to read the council.
Right, we'll start working on that.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of stuff that we'll have to finish up for next. Yeah, there's quite a bit of stuff that we'll have to finish up for next meeting because it's the end of the fiscal tax year, correct? And I'm sure you'll have another F and P meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to get one together.
Those are some other issues too that need to be discussed.
So we'll coordinate with the, the committee to get another meeting, you know, prior to your next meeting. And that's, that's all I have. Any questions?
Shouldn't council be able to have a copy of the minutes in the packet of these committee meetings?
Yeah, you can, you can grab one.
They should be put in a packet, I believe, of all the committee meetings.
As a packet. You can add, you can request one anytime to see what's discussed. Or have a conversation with Brian afterwards even too. Yeah, go ahead.
For that last meeting that we had on Thursday, those minutes have not been approved by that council, that committee, I should say, until their next meeting. So this council does not approve their minutes, they approve their own minutes, and until they're approved, we don't put those out for publication.
Thank you. All right, moving on to parks and public safety. Would you like to add anything?
I don't know yet.
Sergeant Spencer?
We had a good weekend. A little low on the numbers, but people who attended, they had a great time, so. By the way, a good turnout, parade, festival and fireworks were spectacular. So they did, they did a really great job and we had no issues the entire weekend, so happy to say that.
Sergeant Spencer, I wanted to ask you why we no longer receive the monthly activity report in our packet?
Um, I had discussed that with the city manager and the monthly packet takes a couple hours to generate all them numbers. There was something, some, some specific somebody wanted, we could get that, but unfortunately, uh, we lost some manpower with the layoff of Chief Tober. Unfortunately, we didn't lose call complaints and other things that we have to do, so. I asked, because a lot of places do not do the monthly report that we do, and so if she needs something, I give it to her and she approved that.
And I also took that to the mayor before we made that decision.
But then, why doesn't council know of any of these things? You guys are just making decisions without council's recommendations?
Stop, stop. First of all, it's her decision. She runs the city. She runs, she is the boss. You understand that?
No.
That's the way our, our management works.
No.
Yes. No, it's not.
She works for the council as a whole.
She does.
And council needs to be aware of things.
No, not everything, no.
There's decisions being made without council's awareness or approval of it.
No, it's plain and simple. We have to let them do their everyday job. That's, that's their responsibility. Now, if you wanna say something during her, you know, when we wanna talk, when she has a, her yearly review, that's where you can have a discussion. But it, it's her job to run the city. And we give, you know, she follows the council, but it's, it's our, that's why we hired her, okay? To do her job. If you have an issue with it when we go to review, that's when you can, you can say stuff, okay? I, I mean, how does everybody else feel about that?
That's fair. When are these reviews for these?
She'll be having a review coming up.
And Yvonne?
Yvonne does not get reviewed. I oversee the staff.
Correct. She reviews, she would review that.
I think also as far as reports, the whole council wants that report to be reestablished and of course we do that.
Yes, that is correct. As a call, you can direct me to put that back.
Then we, right now, make a motion to do it and it becomes fore-called.
Correct. And realize that you're going to lose, um, an officer's time on the road to be in-house to do that report though.
My next question in public safety is, whose idea was it to bring the dog into City Hall? Where'd that come from?
Oh, actually, I have if you want to. About last year, after seeing many other agencies throughout the country that were utilizing dogs for, for the purpose of seeing children, um, different events, that's when I started bringing the dog into work. Of course, asking the city manager's permission first.
Yes.
But I told her that I had an idea of using my dog for a comfort-type dog. Um, did a lot of research on it. I've talked to a couple different organizations like Michigan Rescue Doodle. Um, and basically, we've been, if you didn't know, councilman, um, we've been taking the dog to different locations. Uh, we've had him out to see the kindergartners at the schools, we've had him see the fifth graders. Uh, we've taken, we were invited up to St. John's, the bike rodeo. And the theory behind these dogs are, um, whether you realize it or not, that in a lot of situations that we have contacts with kids, they might be negative contacts. It could be we're at home possibly for something bad that happened to them, possibly it's arrest of a parent. Um, we're using this dog to go into these places and show these kids that, you know, the police are the good guys. Um, for example, when I talked to the kindergarten class and we talked about summer safety, I brought the dog in. And these are always things that we get permission from the school. I think we just got a letter from the school saying, thank you for bringing the dog. Um, but when I walk in there, these kids see me and they, they're the police officer. They see that dog, they forget about everything. Uh, this weekend, three, three separate times I walked through the park, I think you had saw a couple of the council people were there. I gave away three hundred carts. Most of them carts, uh, went to kids who I didn't seek them out. They come rushing towards us. That's what we want our perception to be as a police. We want kids to feel friendly to talk to us. Um, the dog doesn't ride in the car, he sits in the office most of the time, takes a lot of naps, eats a lot of treats, doesn't do a whole lot during the day. But I think using this tool is invaluable for us as a police department that wants to have this relationship with our community. We build relationships down here and they grow up. And that's what we want to have, is good relationships. Any other questions?
Yes, um, so since Ms. Bauer had stated that in the state of Michigan, the pet owner is liable if something were to happen. So would you be personally liable if something happened on city property or in that school district?
Of course.
And I love pets, I love dogs.
Yeah.
But I think it's a liability on the city, on the state.
He is, um, and I think the city manager can comment on that, but he is covered under the insurance of the city with no encross to the premium. Of course, yes, I would be liable if my mini gold doodle attacked someone. That's probably unlikely, but.
But you never know. I mean, you can't give no guarantees on any pets.
I think, I think that if you saw the animal and see what he does when we go into a classroom, um, it's worth that.
So he is a certified emotional support dog?
Nope, he is not. I have talked to places about getting him a training. Unfortunately, we had a chief that's been laid off. Um, we talked to him back in December, I believe it was, for the Christmas party. Uh, we had to put things on hold, but we're working on it.
Okay.
But the goal is to get him certified. And a lot of that certification, if you look that up, a lot of the certification
I have, yes.
is, is basic stuff. Sit, stay, listen, uh, following the commands, which the dog knows, knows most of them basic commands. Uh, there are other things that you need to do, but we're, we wanna get that done. Yes, ma'am?
I will have to tell, um, the board here, I have experienced personally, Blaze coming into the school system, system. I, I, I worked there, he has been in the classroom where I have been in. And he has been nothing but a positive, positive influence to these children when Officer Spencer brings him in our building.
I'm not denying that, I just don't wanna see something happening. The city is responsible.
And just so you know, I had a conversation with Dawn. I said, that's something that probably should've came to council, that one is one of them. Because we wanna make sure we have the proper policy and procedure in place, not only for, for resident safety, but also for Blaze's safety too.
And I, and I also did have some things that were printed out here. Um, there's prob, uh, you can pass them around if you mind. Uh, McComb County was the newest sheriff's department to get involved in this, and they have a Deputy Taser, a little Chihuahua, or something like that. I can't remember the other, the other deputy's name. It's a dog that they use to break ice, to get in, talk to kids and do activities like that. It's cute, it doesn't do a whole lot, but it's building relationships and that's what we wanna do. Um, and if you Google, uh, any of that, you'll, you'll find a dozen more stories. But it's something that's kinda new and a lot of people don't know about it, but, uh, we're working on it, so. Yes, ma'am?
Is this, um, who's gonna be paying for the training? Is the city gonna pay for that?
The, the training, uh, when I talk to them, they will come here to the department around our schedule and they will train it for free. They've also given us the option, if they wanted to pay for temperature control devices in the, in the vehicle and all that stuff. Um, I don't believe in wasting their money, the dog's not in the car enough. He didn't have that. He doesn't sit in the car. If he's going somewhere, it's because someone has contacted me and they said, hey, can you bring the dog over or vice versa? He goes from here, he goes to there, and he sits around the office most of the rest of the day. So, but if it's, if it's a concern of someone's, uh, we can certainly get it. But I just saw a guy wrote down, wrote about a station here a couple hours ago, had a big lab there in the back, it was a pickup truck. Uh, the reality is, it probably doesn't need it, so.
Why do you call the dog a canine dog? Is he canine trained?
It's tongue-in-cheek. It's tongue-in-cheek.
Your vest on him, he's canine Blaze.
If you look at some of these examples, if you look at some of these examples, like the McComb County sheriff has with his vest and his badge. Everybody else does it in a hat. It's not an issue to anyone, except for maybe somebody. But it hasn't been an issue. And as being a police officer of eighteen years, I haven't anybody who's told me as law enforcement official that they have any offense to it. So it's something that people are doing around the nation, it's not a big deal.
So you're just being a follower? You're doing what everybody else around the nation is doing? And, and, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to disrespect you in any way.
No, I'm taking it.
But most police officers give stuffed animals in situations as you represented, if, you know, there's an issue of parents being arrested. I just don't understand why you're, just because everyone else is in the country is doing it.
I'm not doing it because everybody else in the country is doing it. There's not that many people. I'm doing it because it's a good idea. And I'm doing it because, once again, I wanna build relationships in this community. When you, if you ever have time, if you wanna go to the school with me sometime, we'll go there at the end of the day, early in the morning. When I walk through the hallways, hey Spence, hey Spencer, high five, we're building community relationships with doing things like that. And we want these kids that live in our community to know that the police are their friends. So it's a tool that we use. Um, there's a lot of things that people do. I've got, I've got three, uh, big garbage bags of stuffed animals in the back, like everybody else does. They hardly get used. Um, I don't take the dog with me, we don't do it like that, but, so we're not doing it because everybody else does it. We're doing it because it's a good idea.
How, how often, uh, how much time do you spend in schools with, with the, the dog?
We've had.
The dog being here in the city hall being babysat, you know, with our staff.
Yes, we've had, uh, he's, 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 uh, he's, uh, been to the, um, he's been on all the kindergarten classes. He's been on the fifth grade classes. We've gotten requests to have him at St. Mike's, we haven't had time to do that. Um, so we've had him in probably a dozen environments that we've, we've used him, so.
So the dog would just be here through the school year?
Uh, he's gonna be here every day until, until definitely.
So this is your personal dog? I don't know, can it speak?
Yeah. Yeah. It is my personal.
So, and to reply to that, I would say that's not on Sergeant Spencer. When that dog has come in, he's left the dog back in his room and has a kennel and that, that he keeps it in. He's never asked city staff to babysit it. We enjoy the dog, we bring it up. Honestly, the dog lays in his bed, he's not just keeping us from any work whatsoever. As far as Yvonne will take the dog out on her lunch break for his bathroom break.
And, and I would say this also, um, I know a lot of people are not familiar with this. Uh, but like I said, I was out at the cheese fest this entire weekend. I went through the parade. Um, every single person that came up to me who lives in our town, they said they liked the idea of the dog. Any other questions?
I heard that on the race, we had walked on the leash, that it had confrontation with another dog. And then also I heard at the end of the race in the cons, the pavilion, there was another confrontation with another dog. Do you know anything about that?
There was no confrontation with any dogs that I know of. Um, did a dog walk by him and bark at him and?
I was there.
But to, but to add, but to add on that, I didn't have him. Uh, they had the dog, so.
I had the dog the whole time. And the dog was on the leash, and as Sergeant shared, there were many children who came up to our, the dog. There was no confrontation whatsoever. Borsy and I walked it together. You may ask her afterwards. Um, Mr. Curtis and I think Craig, I asked for a, if they had a container so we could give Blaze some water. Dennis graciously found me one, we gave him some water, we enjoyed the rest of the runners coming in. And I brought Blaze back to Sergeant Spencer. There was no issues whatsoever in that race.
Well, I don't think the belong, the dog belongs at City Hall. I believe if you wanna bring your pet in and the days that you have to go to school with him, that's fine. I, I'm in agreement with that. But to be here in City Hall, day in and day out, distracting, he bark, I've been in here, he comes out and barking, he's a distraction. I'm not against dogs. I have a golden retriever, love him dearly.
There's a lot of studies.
But he doesn't belong in City Hall.
There's a lot of studies on that. And what I would recommend to anybody that has any questions, if you Google, uh, studies on dogs in work environments, you'll find that the studies that they have out there not only say that it makes a better environment that they work in, it also increases work productivity. Um, that's not my words. You can look that information up.
Right. I, I think at this time, I think, I, I think I'll discuss it with Brian a little bit. It should be discussed at the next finance and personnel meeting. And he should make a recommendation, we should have some kind of, have some procedure and policy for, for next meeting. I would agree. So, just so you know, that is on the next.
Next.
Agenda list. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to parks and recreation.
I have a lot to report on, hopefully, any meetings coming up, uh, I don't know where the dog park would fall onto parks and recreation or not, and just bring the council, you know, that, that, you know, that project there. Several things, I, I, I've walked the river trail all, all the time around it and, uh, and also getting arched by a bit. Several things out there. And I, I think I brought a couple into dog attention, but the task coordinates aren't up yet. You know, in June, even though it's been raining for, for two months and that, but those should go up. We did do some shingles on the pavilion next to the main field. Uh, so if that's a project for a fix where the DDA could assist, we're planning some other things on there, you know, to, you know, provide that to the DDA board for assistance too, so.
Yes, and Mr. Pembertie from the school, they got, received a grant to redo the bathroom floors and they expect to have leftover money, so they were going to take on putting metal on the pavilion if possible.
And Youth League, uh, we're still in the process with the Youth League. They're, they're looking at an expansion of all the batting cages that are actually renovation in, you know, batting cage pavilion out there, so we're still working with them to add our next, kind of losing the DDA, but the city project also. And, uh, batting cage pavilion out there, so we're still working with them to add our next, kind of losing the DDA, but the city project also part, to pin down more of the cost and, uh, uh, more detail on what is involved with the city as far as maintaining and such. So it's a pretty good project for the youth league to, uh, do that, uh, so. We'll be looking at that, uh, to help hopefully support that too. But I just wanted to make you aware, I think, uh, the last couple of months, I, I sent you that PowerPoint presentation from them, um, and, uh, it's a pretty worthwhile project for, for off there. Once again, with the, uh, festival this weekend, it was well attended, even though we had bad weather. And, uh, the park allowed youth a lot of exposure, um, around the place gate. I know, um, there's a question when grass is gonna be planted around that, was, it was pretty much a mess being all wet and-
They're just, right, there wasn't time for it to take hold and with the amount of rain. We did look at, um, doing the spray on, but that was a thousand dollars and there was no room in the budget to expend that kinda money.
And I guess that's, that's about it, uh, there was another grant opportunity, I think it was through the Bay Foundation for wider access and I know when I re-planned that we had, uh, an idea of throwing a kayak launch all out the river, so I don't know if that would be a ideal method to look at that project and see if I could get, get off the ground through a grant application through, uh, the Bay Foundation. So, I think that deadline's right here, coming up, uh, for that. And I don't know if county could be his, of assistance on that too, since that's part of the Bay Ray plan, so. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody have, have any questions? All right, moving down, DDA.
Okay, our last meeting, we, uh, had several presentations, uh. Uh, we did, our city attorney, or our DDA attorney for many years, Phil Darby retired and, uh, so we had, um, called, made some calls around and, uh, um, had a recommendation to, uh, for, for Kevin Kilby. Uh, he's, uh, represents a lot of municipalities around the state or basically, or, or tri-county area, uh, Bay County, Saginaw County and, uh, um, a little bit south of there, he's based out of Frankenmuth. For himself, he's out of Troy, but he, he works out, out of Frankenmuth, so he's close by, he's been to our meeting and we did, uh, move to hire him as a DDA attorney, uh, rates are, are very good and, uh, he came highly recommended from other DDA contacts, uh, I, I talked to about him. So we did, uh, hired him as a new DDA attorney. Also had a presentation from Place and Bandabreak, the engineers, um, Gary Bartone, Ken Noah was there to ask the DDA to assist in the sanitary sewer repairs, basically, uh, getting new pumps for our pump stations, all, all three pump stations. The, uh, mowers are in bad shape and, uh, the DDA board did move to support that project in the amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars. Basically, the DDA has contributed fifty percent of the cost of upgrading, uh, pump, pumps and all the lift stations and three lift stations in town. So that was a, a nice presentation and this, and the DDA district, um, greatly benefits from that, as you know, and the residents. If they do fail, there, there's a lot of water in basements and, uh, businesses will have a problem also, so. It was a very worthwhile project to be approved. Uh, we also, I think it was in the prior minutes, but, uh, approved the, approved the new flag pole up here at city hall. And, uh, so that was done last month. And, uh, flags, we, we purchased new flags, as you know, they were up prior to, uh, the festival last weekend. And thank the city staff for getting them up prior to the festival, they had a pretty, pretty nice, prior flags were about three years old, so, um, there'd be a lot of weather through, through the summers. And, uh, so that, that went off well too. And lastly, I touched base with, uh, Don on this and we discussed a little bit at our meeting, uh, with the new law, um, reporting requirements for DDA's, uh, basically is a transparent, um, act or transparent, um, law that was enacted, that the DDA's have to fully show and explain how we, how the money is spent and, uh, all our documents, minutes, our meetings, have to be posted on the website. Uh, so we're in the process of getting all that done up to what is required. Don and I went to a meeting in Bay City about a month ago regarding that also, and a nice presentation there. Uh, but in some doing with the attorney that came in, in our last meeting, we, we talked about what is necessary for DDA and the city to have a formidable relationship. So a management agreement is a good idea, um, that encompasses what the city, um, will do for the DDA board as far as helping it manage itself. So we're gonna be coming up with a, a management agreement for our fee from the city, you know, to help with posting, minutes and stuff like that on the website, uh, assisting in that stuff, of course, audit, uh, and the usual services they do. And also for manpower to put up and down the decorations and, and banners and stuff like that, that we always ask the city to assist with, uh, stuff we supply the DDA has been supplying the city, uh, as far as decorations. So that'll be forthcoming, hopefully next month or after next month's meeting in our new fiscal year. And the signs, welcome signs are, um, up, up, uh, not, not functional yet, but if you saw, they're, they're being worked on right now. At the, the gateway spots, there's this gateway spot, so. It looks like they've come along pretty well and they should be active here in, probably in a couple of weeks. Old ones will be coming down that are in the rear goes, um, dismantled, so all you'll see is a new sign at this point, so. So we had a pretty, pretty active month this last month. Any, any questions?
No, no question.
Oh, one, one last thing, uh, you know, it's noted in the minutes too, that the DDA does expire a, a year, year from April, so two thousand twenty. So we'll be working on, hopefully the council will approve a renewal in some shape or form. Uh, extend the DDA life again, it's, it's been, uh, I think a positive catalyst for the city to have it for these type of projects and assist the city in infrastructure and, and presentation of the city. So, um, hopefully as we move forward, you know, the council itself will hopefully approve an expansion of the DDA board. But we'll be providing monthly information to, to, I'll be trying to collect the council as it moves along, so.
Well, when do you wanna do that?
It's gonna have to begin immediately from the attorney that came in, so.
Okay.
So the process has to start now.
Okay.
Public knowledge and going out to the other, uh, taxing agents, uh, see if they self-participate. Most likely they won't, but our attorney said that they have no choice but to participate at the last meeting, so that still means we, we should collect, um, Delta knowledge. County, Mike may say otherwise back there, but, um, any other taxing agents, we are, we all, also put our, our typical revenue from.
Any other questions? Any questions? Okay, moving on to ordinances.
I had a ordinance workshop last Wednesday. I attended myself, uh, Chris Heding had a child emergency, so he was absent and, uh, Mona, I got no response from her, so. I did some research, uh, I gave you some of the copy of what I was looking at. The first thing I need yous to look at, and we probably, if that's the correct word, need to repeal, the seven oh four, seven oh five, seven oh six, seven oh seven, seven oh eight. Has to do with sale of unwholesome and impeded milk. That goes way back when there was milk in the cows and hauling it in on the trucks on the, on, uh, in the cans or whatever. And back then to regulate the milk supply. Uh, another one I'd like yous to look at is the billboard, pool tables and shuffleboard. Either we'll look at it and get something else in writing for an ordinance or just repeal that one too. Uh, years ago, we used to have a, I don't know what it's called, little hall, pool hall, yeah, so. Chapter six, all of that should be, uh, reviewed. Chapter, or, chapter six, chapter nine, chapter ten, uh, flood damage prevention, I think you need to look at that. And zoning ordinance, that's under a separate contract, so. And then in chapter eleven, the new building code, I believe it needs to be looked at and probably revised. I, I've seen inspectors' names from way back, but I didn't see no current building inspector or plumber or electrician in there, so. That's why I'm asking to look at that one. So within the next month, um, we could all look at these and then, uh, we'll bring the two councils approval to do what we have to do with them.
But I have a question on that, and this, I, this is, so when we do all these ordinances, let's say we go through them all and finally get through the whole book, do we wanna do this all at once or should we do this in sections?
I would-
Is that something that we're gonna probably have to investigate a little bit?
I would say that we need to investigate to make sure we do everything properly. I would, again, based on those investigations, without properly knowing, I would say, you could do either way, but I think it would be manageable in small bits, or if it's gonna be a complete overhaul, you may wanna look at doing it all at once. It's, like I said, we would need to check.
Okay, that's, that was my, would be my question, to update everything correctly.
That's all I have.
Yeah, I, I would suggest everybody on the council always look at ordinances when they ever, ever have a chance. It's just something you should always constantly be looking at. Thank you, Gerald. Does anybody have any questions for him? All right, moving on to fire an N B A report, um. They made the N B, I mean, the Northern B A ambulance, Gerald and I did, and they talked about, they got their new, um, they got their, their grants and, uh, yeah, sure. Do you wanna discuss anything else they talked about?
I'd touch a little bit on the fire.
Right, that, the, the N B A meeting was a long meeting, um, which didn't get very far anywhere. But we discussed an updating all our, our payments and everybody made any payments.
Well, the fire board, I mean, everything was approved, minutes, um, Treasury's report, whatever. Evidently Station sixteen, which is in Frasier Township, uh, I don't know all the details, but a while back, they must've had water damage or something, uh, that's getting repaired and fixed up. They had old tables and chairs in there that they would like to get rid of and they'll be donating them to, I think Camp Fish Tail, so it's all good. And other than that, everything, oh. Firefighters, volunteer firefighters are looking desperately for volunteer firefighters and, you know, it's, it's hard. They're volunteering, they get, I don't know, five dollars a call, ten dollars maybe, and, you know, they're risking their lives for emergencies and taking time away from their families and, you know, some are sticking with it and some just don't wanna do it no more and I don't blame them, you know? Uh, I'm sure in the future, we're gonna have to look at making our fire department a paid fire department. It, it's just gonna have to happen with, uh, Bill H and what have you.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have the ambulance and the fire department all together someday, gold.
That's all I have, so.
Does anybody have any questions? All right, we're gonna move to unfinished business. You wanna touch on this a little bit?
So at our last meeting, the board or council passed to allow us to put no parking signs. But when we did that resolution to do that, it was not stated on what part of roads. So we needed to clarify that, that's why this is coming back before you, because we just simply said all of Road Street, which we forget that Road extends past Fifth Street over onto the other side of town. So we need to make a resolution, um, to permit no parking signs to be put up between Fourth and Second.
Second and Fourth Street. I'm making a motion, um, to clarify, to make no parking, um, on Road Street between Second and Fourth Street.
Okay, so we have a motion to put stop signs between-
No parking.
No parking signs, sorry, Mike. Hey, we have a motion to put no parking signs on Road Street between Second and Fourth Street. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Saha?
Yes.
Councilmember LaFord?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Koyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Betzer?
Yes.
Mayor Rosso?
Yes.
I apologize, everybody, I'm, I have a little here ache, I'm trying to push through here. New business, city dog park. Was this something that everybody would wanna vote on now, do you have enough in, information or would you like to make this?
I'm ready to vote, I, I just need- Um, I'd like to make a motion to either approve or disapprove, uh, the city dog park. I'll support.
Okay, so we have a motion in support to either approve or disapprove the city dog park.
I said a couple of discussion items on that. And I know that the folks went through that, but, uh, I think we still need to verify the liability part of that with our insurance agent. Just to see where the city will be, uh, in case there's a dog bite or something, naturally it will set that, you know? Animal owners has their own liability, but still, anyway, if it's on city property, a city run park, we're still gonna get named in the suit if that ever happens, so. Go ahead, Don.
Well, since we've already had our prior discussion, we've been in contact and according to our insurance agency, that is under the general umbrella. Whether a dog is here in city hall, a dog park that's on city land, whatever, that is under our general liability at no extra cost to the city. So we are insured.
And the other, uh, Chuck Saffman?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The other one was this, uh, Tina had mentioned the, uh, only animals will be allowed, and they're, they're fully vaccinated, have all the shots, but who's gonna verify that, you know? And what's the liability in that part of it, if they're not given, somebody gets rabies off, or that, or extreme example, you know?
Again, that would fall back on the homeowner, or the owner of the dog and their homeowner insurance. We, we are covered and maybe Mike may be able to speak to this more with the county dog park, but as my understanding, as long as we have those rules and regulations, we're covered.
Do you prefer discussion? Roll call vote?
Are we approving or disapproving?
Well, okay, it was mentioned, right, let's, let me clarify, okay. We have.
You do.
We have a motion to approve the city dog park. Do I have to?
You need to have it restated, because the way it is worded, it is misleading, you need to either have a motion one way or the other.
That says approve or disapprove.
I'm sorry, that was just because that's, we don't know what your feelings are going to be, so we put it down there for the presentation. Again, that is up to council, so that's why we had approve or disapprove, 'cause we didn't know which way anyone would lean.
Okay, so we need to do a motion to approve.
But what do we do with our own motion?
Have someone introduce the motion, I'm sorry, again, I'm speaking, this is the clerk's area, this, this is her area.
We need to be very specific on your motion.
Right.
What you were, what are you motioning for?
Right.
So I.
So what do I do with the first one, just?
I believe you amend according to, check your Roberts rules, but I believe in Roberts rules, you're going to amend your motion and restate it as to approve, if that is your tendency.
So I'm gonna make a motion to amend my prior motion for the city dog park approve or disapprove. But no, that's how I stated it the first time.
Okay.
So I wanna amend it, I wanna get rid of that motion.
Okay.
That's what I just said.
I can go support that motion.
Right?
Now staying, so supportive.
Now I would like to motion to approve the city dog park.
Becky will have two votes.
Second.
Second. If I, second, the amendment of the first motion? Yes. Okay.
Okay, so what is, what is the motion then?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the city dog park.
I support the motion.
Okay, so now we have a motion to approve the city dog park, all in favor, or no, excuse me, roll call.
Councilmember Coier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember LaPorte?
Yes.
Councilmember Saha?
Yes.
Councilmember Betzer?
Yes.
Mayor Brazel?
Yes.
Okay, amendment to budget regarding R R I repair, replacement, improvement fund.
So, as Chairman Saha reported during the F and P, when we sat down with the USDA about our grant or loan, I'm sorry, um, we are fully funded as far as those accounts that we needed, but in the installation of those loans, there was also something called an R R I, as you can see, the repair, replacement, improvement of those, that we need to have, so if something was to happen, that we would have those monies available. Um, they were to start out with the start of the loan, and so much is supposed to be deposited each year into those accounts to fully fund them. At the end, that money would then be released back to the city. So, in order to get us started and make us compliant, we need to put that ten dollars that we collect quarterly on the water bill, that base rate into that R R I. So, I need permission to take that twenty-six thousand that we have budgeted under debt retirement and move that into the R R I account.
Those funds are coming out of our unreserved reserves?
Yes, unreserved.
So, our, our bank account, um, follow, and, you know, our reserves there that we draw on for funding deficits or unexpected things, that's where the money's coming from. It's not part of the budget.
Going forward, it will be, because technically, that's what that debt retirement was for, was for that R R I, it just was never put into the separate account like it should have been.
So I'll make a motion to, uh, move twenty-six thousand, correct?
Correct.
Out of, uh, our uncovered reserves, um, to cover the, um, necessary amount to be moved to the R R I account established for the city.
I support.
Okay, so we have a motion in support to take twenty-six thousand dollars out of our reserves to move to R R I. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember LaPorte?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Coier?
Yes.
Councilmember Betzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Saha?
Yes.
Mayor Brazel?
Yes.
All right, moving on to public comment, and I just wanna remind everybody, there's a five, five minute time limit.
I just wanted to congratulate Gerald on his memorial. I had customers come in and say that it was really nice, so I'm, next year, hope to be there, so.
Yeah, it was very good.
Based to all those who worked on, uh, their city festival over the weekend, it was wonderful. Mr. Dranchek, Commissioner Dranchek, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wayne Dranchek, Bay County Commissioner, just a couple of things. Uh, our Bay County Dog Park, as, uh, your city manager said, is under our umbrella, we're insured with M M R M A, which has about eighty percent of the counties in the state of Michigan. But no matter what, like you say, like, uh, Sergeant Spencer was saying, the owner is responsible, but doesn't matter. If they're gonna be in property, if there's an issue, you're gonna get tapped, because everybody has his perception, especially attorneys, that deep pockets for municipal. Uh, the fireworks, fantastic, they were, they were really great out there, place gave really looked nice, kudos to you guys. Uh, Greg, thank you for everything you did at the cheese festival. Now, I got a little issue regardless of what Sergeant Spencer said. I had a person come up to me and say, your police dog needs some extra training. I goes, what do you mean? Well, somebody had a little problem, I don't know, I wasn't there. Sergeant Spencer did not have the dog with him, he was walked by, probably you too. I'm, I'm just relaying the message. I personally saw an issue when it was at the inn, 'cause we were over there handing out oranges and stuff. There was a large white female dog, and you can't blame Blaze, you know, he's whatever, but I mean, as long as he is in Sergeant Spencer's control on the leash, I don't think there's a problem. But boy, you know, he's a, you know, he's, he's ran bunches, you know that, you've seen him go, you know, you, I know, you know what I'm talking about right at the end too. If it were not for the person that owned this larger dogs telling his female to sit, there would have been an issue. That dog was extremely well-trained, probably a lot older or whatever. My suggestion would be, just a suggestion, take the police badge off and put Blaze's buddy or something on, you know, hey, if he wants the other thing, that's fine, but gotta just associate a police dog from a comfort dog, all right? We have comfort dog at the county prosecutor every once in a while, brings one in. If there's a child that needs to have, as Sergeant Spencer said, comfort, feel comfortable. Okay, enough said on that, giving you guys a heads up, right now, county's really looking at D D eights. We went through one already, we monitor township, as they come up for renewal, the program's gonna be different, there's gonna be no more bank accounts for D D eights. That money taxpayers have paid to, for mosquito control, senior citizen, uh, things, veterans and all that. This money gets also captured along with, uh, you know, money that was up and above what that property was worth before. Their intention was to put the money back into the district that is funded at, not build huge bank accounts for, maybe, maybe we're gonna have a project. We just got through with one in Monitor Township, they had about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of tax money that should've been going out to all these entities. We took that, we left them with a small amount of money so that they could have their meetings and, and whatever. If they have a project, hey, we, we're, we're gonna redo this out at, at Monitor Township, at their park, industrial park. How much is the project? One point four million dollars. Okay, there you go, you're set and you're ready to go, you can start your capture on that. That's how it's gonna work from now on. Tuesday, we're going into negotiations with Banker Township, and it's the same situation there. I think they're just shy of seven, or eight hundred thousand dollars, and, and they're up, uh, later this year. But I'm just telling you folks that this is what, this is reality, this is what, you know, this is the way it is, because some people, some places have amassed all these funds, and it's not right, that's not what it's for. State of Michigan figures someplace, they don't even know, that's why they're making everybody do reporting. And they, they don't even know exactly how much money is out there that's being captured and how much is saved. There's no reporting really that goes on. They figure it could be, you know, one point two to one point seven billion with a B dollars total, all right? So, I mean, everybody's struggling because of roads and, you know, security and things of that nature, but I'm just, you know, I'm just, I hate to be to bear her bad news, but this is what, this is what's gonna happen, all right?
Thank you.
Anybody got any questions, everybody? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thanks, Mike.
Mrs. Saffinoff.
You can know your dog, me. Always get a little nervous when I get up here, not because of you, but because my dad is sitting there looking at me. Um, I brought some stats, and I don't, I think it's important that you understand. You know, I keep hearing the rumors, oh my God, Pinconning Township wants the sheriff in your, uh, area, wants them to be the police. That is the last thing we would want, but we believe that if somebody needs an officer, that officer should be available to them. For years, Pinconning Township did not have officers, and we had to wait for officers to come, that's horrible. So, um, I, I have always told our officers that we would like to, um, if they're called or if they're needed somewhere else, to go. The other day, I got, um, uh, from the nine-one-one dispatch, for the last six and a half, um, let's see if I can find it, the last six and a half months, there was exactly two hundred and three calls made to the city of Pinconning by the Bay County Sheriff Department. Seventy-nine of them, 'cause you're, I'm gonna hear this, 'cause I hear it from the other units. Yes, you pay taxes to the Bay County Sheriff Department, they have general cars. Those general cars can come from as far as Frankenloss, as far as Portsmouth Monitor, anywhere in there. They're general cars, and that's what the tax dollars are paying for. And those officers came to Pinconning City and made seventy-nine calls. Leaving a hundred and twenty-seven calls, Pinconning Township's officers, which is paid by Pinconning Township, to your city. This has nothing to do with Pinconning Township, it's city calls, I do have it for you, I'll gonna give it to you. I also have had discussions with the city manager, Annie Von, because we have a problem, and if we're gonna have a dog discussion, let's have it. One, Pinconning Township got a K nine unit probably about a year and a half ago. We know what a K nine unit is, and we know the training that it takes. Even to this day, our K nine unit goes to training twice a month. I have no problem with the city having a dog, I just think the dog needs to be trained, that was the issue. Please get it trained, because it makes a bad mark on all of us if that dog bites somebody, because it will make kids very scared. And we have a dog that goes in the school also. I am not going to personally stand here and attack anyone in this building, but the first time our dog went out for a class at, um, the school or a, a search, that very day, this came from your police department. You love the shirt. Top page, it was on your Facebook page. That shows how much somebody loves dogs. The dog has a knife in its hand. Okay, the next page was the second time our dog went in the school. Pinconning's police dog. Says Pinconning Police on there. Dog's driving a car. How ridiculous this looks, and they understand why we're upset. The only thing that I have against Blaze is the fact, I have a K nine, I have a Doodle, I love my dog. It's the smartest dog in the world, if you're gonna have emotional support dog, that's a dog to have, 'cause they're great with kids. I've had mine eight years, and it supports me. This was, you think it's over with? This was in the paper today, or in, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll take that back, this was on Spencer's Facebook page, not your police department page, Facebook page. We have tried everything to get along with you people. We wanna work together. People don't see boundaries, they don't know where the city ends and the township begins, they don't see boundaries. This kinda stuff has got to stop, and that's all I've ever asked of all of you, is to please have your employees watch, and don't let them do this, this is ridiculous, it's tearing people apart, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Any more public comment? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Water in my parents' yard. I'm sorry, bloody waters. Uh, they say it's our problem. But how come it's not draining out, they said the drains are blocked.
I'm, this is public comment. This is not question and answer.
What we're asking is, is how do we?
Right, how do we go about having the city come out and see if, why it's not draining? That's why we want.
And I know for a fact, we're just the renters, so we don't have a say, but at the same time, being a resident of Pinconning, and I'm sort of active in the community, everybody knows my family, and to have my yard look like that, I came into City Hall, I asked a gazillion questions, and I understand it's in my backyard, and I was told nobody can do anything. But at the same time, as a, as a resident of Pinconning, I think there could've been a better effort made to tell us what could've been done with the amount of water we have in our yard.
We were told that we weren't allowed to put it in the storm drain, we were told we weren't allowed to go and do anything about it. I've talked to four tiling companies throughout the state, and they said I have to get a permit, or we have, the landlords get a permit from the city and be able to go into the storm drain with the excess water off of. Nicole tried to come in and get, and figure out what we needed to, to get our permits, to have the landlords get the permits, no help was given. City management did not help us.
And she did come up to the residents, but all she did was get out of her car and said, I have the same amount of water in my backyard. I understand that, but at the same time, when you are asked questions, I do believe that there's a certain way of helping and directing people, and I don't feel that you are given a fair sense of direction or an idea or something to resolve our issue.
As in personnel's not doing their job to assist the city residents? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good.
Um, so this is our first council meeting, and we've lived in the town for several years, so just let me know if I'm doing something wrong. Um, but basically, um, I was given the recommendation by, um, Don Hoder to, um, ask the council men and women to consider the building inspection analysis from, um, our two current building inspectors. So, we put a new roof on our house last June or July approximately. So we put a new roof on our house last June or July approximately and the company that we hired did not do a good job. So we had a very massive water damage in our house. So we went through this, the system, I contacted L Thompson, contacted Gary Johnson, contacted multiple people to figure out what do we do, what's the process, we've never had this happen before. So with everybody's recommendation, they told me to file a Laura complaint. So I did that, filled out all the information, we took a bunch of videos, pictures of the damage. Then we sent it all in and then we just got our letter probably three weeks ago saying that the state is dismissing it because the two building inspectors for our county said that there was no water damage in my house from the roof leaking. So they're not going to take any action on the company that literally has given us thousands of dollars of damage in our house. So before we put on our roof, there was no damage. We only put on our roof because it just so happened that we had a windstorm and it worked out in our favor, so we went ahead and did it. So we ended up with all this damage that we really didn't have to begin with. So I would like someone to look at this building inspector's analysis report because both Gary Johnson and L Thompson lied and filed a report that is clearly not true because I have pictures of water damage in my bedroom, my ceiling's falling down. We have videos of water dripping into our brand new remodeled bathroom. So I contacted the state of Michigan and asked them, okay, what's the process? We're going to appeal it because clearly this is not correct. And they said that it's all up to the building inspectors of the district, they have nothing to do with it and there's nothing with this folder of videos and pictures sent in our complaint file. They will not do anything until the building inspectors rewrite the report or I asked to hire, I will pay for an independent inspector, not associated with the county at this point because I just want this guy to pay the price for the damage that I did to my house. Or be fined or something because he's not being held liable for thousands of dollars of damage. So it's just not right. And I can't do anything until the two building inspectors, Gary Johnson and L Thompson, both of which lied to me on the phone and I caught them by contacting the state of Michigan and figured it out. They won't, they won't return my phone calls, they won't call me, they won't fix it. And so now I'm asking the council to look at the situation and I can't do anything, my hands are tied. And I'm not going to give up because it's not right, so. That's right. I have pictures and documentation.
I would just make a suggestion. Would you state your address or anything?
Sure, I can. Seven hundred West Second Street. I think at one point I actually had contacted you and I contacted almost anybody that I could think of because I didn't know what to do. So, yes, seven hundred West Second Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
Any other, yes, sir?
Yeah, just real quick, a couple of issues is I brought up by the DDA meeting and brought the council, Gibson, oh, and Chris Keeney, one-ten West North Banks. And that there's a pipe on the water, on Water Street, just as you come around that dirt road that leads to the valleys. But A.I., and there's no yellow marking on it and I saw two people already trip over it. And I love the city and I don't want them to have, pay legal fees because, you know, there's a pipe sticking out. He's, and Council Gibson, I think he told me he saw it and he checked it out. And all it is, just a yellow, some yellow paint or something put on there. And that, I understand the city, you know, the public workers are busy, you know, and I just go and put yellow paint on there but by the way, cops will come by, think I'm defacing the property. So maybe I could, you know, with your permission, I just get the paint and do it so that you guys don't have to worry about it. And two, you know, it's nothing against city manager here, but just down the road. There's a reason why, like in Congress and United States, the state government still have checks and balances. If you have somebody who's a city manager and a treasurer, you kind of lose a little check and balance there. And any action I've had with Don, it's been positive, she's always helped me out, since she'll take care of it and when I brought up a need for another ambulance a couple of years or so ago, you guys took care of it. I appreciate it and I told you then that I'd also volunteer if you guys needed it. I've helped with the volunteer for the city, you had one year, and I volunteered at the food bank and I volunteered at the concession stand. So I thank you guys for what you've done, when I brought up the situation, to take care of it. And I hope that you get into that situation, take care of that water pipe there, that it's a turnoff. I was told it was a turn-on valve for the water. Because I don't want you guys to have to worry about having to go to court because, well, there is no yellow paint or yellow strip there. You put a cone over it before, but then the cone disappeared, so. And that's all I got to say, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Be none? Aye. Oh, go ahead. Permission to speak freely, Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir, five minutes. Five minutes, thank you. Terry Spencer, twenty-sixth Boone Drive, Bay City, Michigan. Just to make a couple of comments about some of the words that were said and probability that are words that will be said later. That was an interesting statement. There was a but in the first part of her wording that she said, don't want the sheriff's department to take control, but here's our stats. Understandably, I don't see the stats, I don't know if they're accurate or not. I didn't hear her mention anything about the Michigan State Police stats. Our stats are different from the sheriff's department's stats. Every call they take is generated through their computer system. Our stats are not like that. We have people that walk into our building, we have people that call us on the telephone. We have people that wave us down the street. So there's a significant difference. On the other portion of that, I will tell you that the piece of paper that she gave you, in fact, is not a knife. We've already talked about this. It's a block. That was a picture that was approved by the last chief. And instead, when she had an issue with that picture, which was, I thought, a positive post saying thank you for bringing your dogs into our schools and kind of a warning to people who have drugs and who would bring them items into our school. Instead of doing what they should have did, because as I explained to the mayor, I texted the sheriff a week before that inviting his deputies to a safety meeting we're having, he could have texted me if he had an issue. She certainly could have texted the city manager, she certainly could have let everybody else know. But what she did do is she went to every other single person and tried to stir the pot. I'm not going to mince words about it. She does not want us to be here because she wants us as a city to fail. She wants our police department to fail so that way she can have her deputies, as she most commonly calls them, to be out there. She doesn't want you to have control. Let's get rid of the police department. Maybe you can give her the park as well. She has her own agenda. And if she wants to stir up stuff, hey, my suggestion to her would be to worry about her own department. Because in our community, our residents are happy with us. As far as the, my personal Facebook information, just so you all know, and I'm sure she might comment about the false allegations she made about me. But we were contacted by the, by the News Five. They did a story, as I sat there doing the story about the dog, the reporter was contacted via Facebook Messenger. And the person that did it is the same person that made the complaint. They stated they couldn't talk on air because the fear she had for her safety, the fear she had for her safety and the family. She was talking about me, that's just false, that's not right. I've been an officer for eighteen years. I have not had one formal complaint until this formal complaint came in. I however, had six verbal complaints the last year. Does anybody want to guess where they all came from? The township. Every one of them. They want us to fail. And that's part of their plan. I'm a military veteran, honorably discharged twice. I've been an officer for eighteen years. I don't have one write-up in my record. When you talk to our community members, you'll see positive reactions. I serve on other boards, the DDA for the city of Bay City, thirteen panel board, I'm a veteran. I serve on the American Legion Board as a trustee, a trustee for the Fraternal Order of Police. I'm also on the Bay Veterans Council. They don't have them kind of people there. If they want to make up lies, hey, that's fine. They can't, the things they say are just false. And the people that I know, that I've talked to, they all know my reputation compared to their reputation. If there's any other questions anybody has, feel free to talk to me about it afterwards. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? More?
I know I'm not supposed to, but I would just have to say kudos to Officer Spencer, I support you one hundred percent.
Thank you. Need no more public comment?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
Of support.
We have a motion and support to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We adjourn.